Losing my mind.
No, there's sound in here.
Oh, there's sound in here now? Okay.
We're testing a new speaker here tonight, right?
You did.
So the folks in the back of the room can hear. So I guess they're better than half in the past.
Oh, okay.
I can hear some of the feedback, but it's not, I mean, you get used to it. So I hear voices anyway, so it doesn't matter. Okay.
It just, I kept hearing it.
So early. Let's set the annual spring town meeting, Mr. Units.
I request that we set the annual town meeting for May 13th. That's a Monday. And to schedule it for the Norton High School auditorium. And open the warrant tonight with all articles being accepted until 4:00 P.M. on February 6th.
So right now, we have five. We have five articles?
No, that's for January.
This will be the regular May.
This is for the May town.
Okay. Way ahead of myself here. Oh, yeah. Okay. Anyone have any questions? Guarantee motion to set the spring annual town meeting on to Monday, May 13th, 2019, at 7:00 P.M. at the Norton High School Auditorium.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Seeing none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Let's do the contract awards.
The first contract is for appraisal services for the Route 123 project. So this will be an appraiser for all the easements and takings that have to be done. And I recommend the low bidder, Donald Walinski, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
Any questions? Guarantee motion to ARQ, huh? For the improvement of Route 123 Carter and traffic signal installation project. A total of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars to Donald S. Walinski. Motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Just a second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's the new, that's the new traffic signal, which is going to go over 495. And that's something we've been working on for many years, but it will start the improvements from 495 back to Pine Street. We'll start, this will be the first phase that they'll do. They'll do the lights first at our request. Move everything back to Pine Street from there, so.
The next contract awards are the DVW Services Awards. And these include pavement reclamation, in-place hut mix, sidewalk construction, setting, arbing, and edging, superpave hut mix asphalt, polymer modified crack sealing, chlorinated rubber traffic line painting, thermoplastic traffic line painting, godrail installation of stale bean, tub grinding, loam, compost, and gravel screening, snow shoveling on flat roofs.
This is all part of the Southeastern Regional Services Group.
Correct.
Something we've been working with as a group for many years, so to get the best deal. Any other questions?
And just for your benefit, attached is, you can see, is the tally sheets, so you can see what all the bids were. And you can see in the box is what we paid last year. Some of the things went down quite a bit, some things went up.
Any questions? Guarantee motion to approve the Southeastern Regional Services Group, DVW Services Award for February 1st, 2019, to January 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Motion, second and third. Any further discussion? Seeing none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, we'll close enough. Is it actually a hearing?
It is actually advertised.
Bob, you're gonna have to...
And the attorney's not here yet, but maybe Jason can... Yeah, if we could just do the next, do the town meeting.
We have to, we have to call, call this a meeting toward 7:10. Why don't you read the, read the notice, public hearing? Bob, you got it?
Yeah, I've got it.
Thank you, Maria. Bob, agree.
Thank you. Town of Norton Board of Selectmen Notice Public Hearing Regarding Renewal of Cable Television License for Comcast of Massachusetts II Incorporated, Thursday, December 13th, 2018, at 7:10 P.M. Municipal Center Selectmen's Meeting Room, 70 East Main Street, Norton, Mass. Board of Selectmen of the Town of Norton as a cable television licensing issuing authority will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 13th, 2018, at 7:10 P.M. at the Norton Municipal Center Selectmen's Meeting Room, 70 East Main Street, Norton, Mass. Present to 207 CMR 3.05 and any applicable cable television renewal license laws, regulations, requirements regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Comcast of Massachusetts II Incorporated. Any applications, reports, statements, or amendments in this possession of the town to be considered at the hearing shall be available for public inspection and reproduction at a reasonable fee at the Board of Selectmen's Office during regular town office hours.
Chair, guarantee motion to table this until the attorney arrives.
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll table that for the attorney. On the agenda, we have the review of the special town meeting for, this is the one I thought we were talking about, for 11419. To include, but not limited to, referral zoning by law amendments and non-binding recommendations, Mr. Units.
Article one, prior year bills, and can you vote on them as we go? Prior year bills, we don't have anything right now, so it's there as a placeholder if something comes up. But right now, nothing there.
So we'll take no action on that.
Yep.
Table, chair, guarantee motion, no action on Article one.
Second.
Who was the second? Wasn't fair?
Aye.
Article two?
Article two is the zoning amendment, the main purpose for the meeting. And this amendment would do two things. First of all, as the developer that came in and spoke to you, it would allow solar on bogs, active cranberry bogs. And the other aspect of this is in order to become a green community, we need to do two things. One is to have solar allowed without a special permit. It's my right. Still would need a site plan approval, but no special permit approval. And then later on, we'll have to, at the May meeting, do the stretch code in order to become a green community. So tonight, I'd recommend that the board vote to refer the article to the planning board for its non-binding recommendation.
Any more questions, anybody? So, guarantee motion to support Article two and to...
Refer to the planning board for its non-binding recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Article three?
Article three is the energy tax agreement with the solar developer, Nexon Energy. And this agreement would provide the town with $200,000 a year for the next 20 years. And it's a decent agreement and that's been reviewed by the assessors office. And I want to thank Denise Ellis, the assessor, for developing that pilot agreement. And I know you have later in your agenda to vote to sign the agreement, but you could probably take care of both items here if you would vote to support Article three and also vote to sign the pilot agreement.
Article three is the proposed solar farm down on Bay Road. They have agreed to pay for the special town meeting also, right? That's probably the deal.
Yes.
So we're calling the special, because obviously, it's very important to the town to get this $200,000 a year. We definitely can use the funds. And also, on Article two, keeping in mind that we own on slattery property, where we're trying to develop and trying to put in a solar farm ourselves, that there are bogs down there too that we may be able to utilize for the same purpose. So that'll, that'll help us in our, in our process too, so. Any questions? Then, guarantee motion to support Article three and to sign the tip agreement.
Pilot.
Pilot agreement, uh, tip, pilot agreement with energy, what's the name of the company?
Nexon Energy.
Nexon. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
So that's unanimous. Article four?
Article four is a request to rescind the authorization for borrowing. This is for five articles that we've done borrowing on previously, but the project either came in under or we got grants to cover portions of the items. So I'll read them to you. The first one is Article one, June 6th, 2011, the high school construction project. This would rescind nineteen thousand, nineteen million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars because we had authorized borrowing for the entire project until we knew what the MSBA reimbursement would be. The second is Article 12, October 7th, 2013, the crane farm land acquisition, and rescind $140,800. Article six, February 25th, 2015, the Erickson Property Land Acquisition, rescind $5,000. Article 10, May 11th, 2015, the Norton Reservoir Dam Spillway, rescind $1,400. And Article eight, May 11th, 2015, the Saw Connection, LG Norse, rescind $195,000.
Now, this was money we set aside. Now, is this real money? Is this money coming back?
No, it was, it was authorized to be borrowed, but we didn't have to go to the amount that...
Yeah, that makes sense, you know, nineteen million dollars.
This is just cleaning up the books.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any question? See, now, chair, guarantee motion to support Article four.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Article five?
Article five is for the town common. Previously, we authorized or appropriated money for the town common fence. And there may be small amounts of money left over from that. And I know there's other things that are looking to be done on the common as far as lights and electricity. And this would authorize us to use that money for other purposes on the town common.
We're not asking for any more money. We're asking to move some money around to allow additional expenses.
Was it sixty?
The fence, highway department doing the work on the fence has saved us tens of thousands of dollars. And by doing so, we've actually got a few dollars left over that we can use for other purposes.
Just so everyone's clear, this is money that was originally intended for the common, that's staying with the common.
Right. It's just broadening the uses of it. And it's broadening it from just a fence to, if we need benches, we still have to put the benches in. We still have the lighting we have to work on. We have some electrical work to be done. There's still some stuff. The gazebo is still there. We still have other things we're trying to get cleaned up.
How much was the money borrowed by?
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Sixty-five originally. It was going to be roughly about $5,000 worth. Chair, guarantee motion to support Article five?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Town hall business hours.
Mr. Units?
Just, we have the holidays coming up. Christmas is on a Tuesday. And New Year's, obviously, is on a Tuesday also. So just want to remind people, the town hall will be closed at 12:30 on December 24th and closed on, obviously, December 25th and 12:30 on December 31st and closed on January 1st.
Okay. Any questions? Hey, we have a request to declare town property a surplus on a police vehicle, 2013 Dodge Charger. I'm sure it's a beautiful piece of equipment.
I have it right here.
Okay. So it is. The chief clerk is asking that the vehicle be declared surplus, deemed surplus, 2013 Dodge Charger. Mileage is 103,596 miles. And he's already given the keys to keep, so he also has to go. This'll go on a, where'd it go there?
Municipal.
Institute. Any other questions? We found in the last few years, it's better for us to use this new program and to just auction them off. We just knew we'd get nothing from them. At least now, we're getting a few dollars for the stuff. Guarantee motion to declare his town property surplus for a police vehicle, 2013 Dodge Charger.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Just have another problem here shortly.
They can wait. They can wait.
There's no time on theirs.
Yep. Okay, so next on the agenda is discussion of posting contracts online. If we all recall, at the last town meeting, there was a article asking that all town contracts be posted online. And personally, I feel when, you know, it was voted in favor. It was a majority vote. And I feel that we need to re-suggest the issue and talk about, you know, what, how much effort it would take to actually post these. I guess the various union contract negotiations, right? Any kind of contract, union, whatever. Anybody have any thoughts on it?
I was never in favor in the first place. I don't feel so why we need to do this to have people come and look at contracts. I don't know, I don't know what the, what people on the outside are asking us to do this for. Number one, what purpose is it to help the taxpayers to look up the contracts? Is somebody trying to figure out whether the board of selectmen, the town manager, and everybody is not proceeding in the right applications to award bids? Or I, I just don't understand this whole format and why we're even involved.
Yeah, it's not for bids. That, the finance committee rejected that one.
It's not the bids.
It's just employee contracts.
Just employee contracts. So it would be all school contracts, all town hall contracts, all contracts between various entities, like we have a contract with the town manager. You know, we negotiate these things normally in a three-year cycle. So my opinion is, it doesn't take much to put it online. You know, it really doesn't. I have nothing to hide, so. I mean, if you're right, if it had to do with all these other contracts, oh, yeah, there's no way we could stay on top of it, Brad.
The only thing that I, the only concern I have is we have a number of unique contracts with individuals. I want to make sure that any personal information is redacted before it's put online because addresses, any kind of personal information should not be put online. So as long as that's done, and, I mean, we'll just, I don't expect it to be done overnight, but as long as we stop the process and we'll just start scanning them and posting them online.
Yeah, I mean, some...
Like I said, I just want to make sure that anything that's towards individuals, that all their personal information is redacted before it's on the internet.
I believe some of the school contracts are already online so people can see them. Have we put any of the town contracts online? Yep. Anyone else? I mean, in my opinion, there was, there was a town meeting vote. People voted in favor of it. And I think we should need to do it. Like I said, we've got nothing to hide. But, you know, it does need some direction from this board because it wasn't really, how was it worded? It wasn't really a...
It's an advisory.
Advisory vote. It wasn't mandating that we do it. Advisory. Personally, I don't have a problem doing it, so.
But I'm definitely in agreement with Brad that there's some personal information.
Yeah, you want to make sure all that stuff, that personal information has to be, has to be blocked out.
Yep.
But that's the only part that should be blocked out.
Correct, yep, 100%.
I don't want these people going to look like something the Pentagon released with a black mask to the whole thing, you know? We've got to make sure we do this.
Seen a lot of that lately.
Yeah, there is. We do a lot of stuff, so.
A lot of white out.
Okay, chair would, guarantee motion to request that all town departments put all their various personnel contracts online and to remove any personal information from, from the contracts related to individual contracts.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Nexon, we already took care of, right?
The attorney's here.
I know, but we have another. We have a 7:30 too, so I don't want to mix them together. They're five minutes.
I got a couple of quick things in.
Okay, go ahead.
Just under the town manager's report. I'll just do a couple of quick things. The last meeting, I think we talked about the Mary Jo Road project. Just want to say that the applicant, petitioner, withdrew their application, so it did not move forward.
And I want to, I want to stress that if some of the people out there feel that this isn't the end of it, it is the end of it. This, in a public meeting, they withdrew their application. Now, it doesn't mean they can't put one somewhere else. They can't buy a lease from another location. But in this particular Mary Jo Road project, they have withdrawn their application. So publicly, so therefore, it should never happen.
Yep.
And just, I, I attached, or I think in your folders the other night, the Board of Health voted some new smoking regulations, which I, I thought actually were state laws, but are not. So they voted to ban smoking at town parks, playgrounds, beaches. So you can look in that and see what areas that they've banned them. And it's noncriminal disposition, so it's a fine of $100, $200, $300 if someone allows smoking in some of that area or someone's caught smoking, so.
Oh, years ago, we had, there are some regulations in places we stopped in all public places.
Schools.
Smoking town halls, schools, bars.
Right.
I mean, a lot of places were restricted.
Right, and that's in here, but they just added those other...
I see they've got e-cigarette information in here now, too.
Municipal owned parks and playgrounds, municipal owned athletic fields, municipal owned beaches, and other swimming areas. And the use of e-cigarettes is prohibited. Smoking is prohibited per Massachusetts law.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Who wants to take a vote on that? Yeah, actually, they voted.
They voted, you don't have to.
Just making us aware of it.
Just one other quick thing. Maybe we could discuss it at the next meeting. We had a meeting at District Five today on the Route 123 project. And one of the concerns that came up is the busy traffic that's on Route 123. And if they're working only during the day, they're only going to be able to work like 9:30 to 3:00 every day because they won't be able to work during the rush hours. And they, we were talking about whether night work would be allowed. So we can put it on the next agenda. You can think about it. We'll have a discussion on it then. What I told them was probably from Pine Street this way towards the river. It's probably not a problem because it's all businesses. And they might prefer that the work be done at night so their businesses aren't affected, but would have to think about the rest of the way. So I'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Guarantee motion to take, remove from the table continuation of the hearing on alteration of the premises for Kelly's Place at Crossing Incorporated DBA Kelly's Place to expand the seating capacity by 20 more patrons in the adjacent space consisting of 990 square feet and also adding a service counter for staff with refrigerator, sink, and coffee station to its commensurate all-alcoholic license to expose, keep the sale, to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk to the premises at 292 East Main Street, Norton, Mass. Folks, you want to come on up, please? And we sent you all home with some requests to work out some details. Hopefully, we have some solutions to some of the problems we think you guys are having down there, so. Where are we?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Vinnie Aiello again. We had some additional drawings to address the Hastings Way parking. We submitted those drawings to planning and zoning. And I also spoke with Deputy Simmons on the fire apparatus with the new layout. And he did not have any issues. He actually thought it was a better plan than the plan we had in place prior. Planning and zoning has not gotten back to me, so I don't know what their views on the new plan is. Redmail Village didn't have an issue with the new layout. So that's where we basically stand at this point. I don't...
Well...
Just identify yourself for the record.
Robert Frotten, 21 Owen Road, resident of Redmail and a trustee with my fellow trustees. So we've been working very well together. And this morning, actually, we met again. We're trying to not only formulate the plan for the parking that will help Kelly's Place accommodate, but we have some concerns about Hastings Way. So we're trying to tie that all together to solve all of the problems. And we have an MOU that we want to sign, but we're waiting for the plans to be finalized. So actually, this morning, we concluded, I think, altogether, that we would ask you tonight for another postponement so we can work these finer details. We're working well together. There's no animosity going on. We just need a little more time.
You have, at this point, you have to understand one thing about what we're doing here. We, as a town body, have responsibility to, as far as the licensing part of it goes. A conflict between landowners is really beyond our purview. We've been, we've been trying to get you guys to come up with a solution and a plan. I made a comment at the last meeting that I felt strong enough that we need to make this thing happen. Our inspectors have approved this plan, have agreed to this plan for an additional seating capacity. And whether or not the association or the tenants of the facility or the, or Kelly's Place can come up with a solution is really not within our purview. We're not supposed to be in this, in this area. So my personal opinion is, I want you guys to continue to negotiate, So my personal opinion is, I want you guys to continue to negotiate, but I want to approve their license and let them get on with business. And that's my personal opinion. And we've given two extensions already, and I'm not comfortable giving a third, to be honest with you. If anyone else wants to chime in, feel free.
Can I-
Yeah, sure.
Add to that? Respectfully, we know your difficult situation in many ways, because we're trustees at a much smaller scale. We face the same kind of issues. But it's all tied in together until we solve the problem, which you identified. Mr. Bramwell spoke to the hazards on Hastings Way. We really feel that to approve an extension of the business, again, we're talking about an expansion of the business. You know, there were comments made last meeting that we were hurting the business. I mean, respectfully, again, we're not hurting the business. I mean, the business is operating as very successful. That's why they want to expand. But to allow an expansion when a safety hazard hasn't been addressed properly seems to me to be short-sighted when we're very close to an agreement. So I would, again, respectfully ask for a postponement.
Our departments, our police department and fire department, have indicated to us that they have no issue with safety issues over there. So you have to understand, again, we're coming from the town side of it. We have professionals that we use here to explain the details and what we should go ahead with and what we should do. I'm not suggesting, again, that I want you guys to work it out. One thing that I wanted to see was outside parking for employees. I'm glad we at least got that part solved. And I understand there's going to be some other issues. But, you know, we're coming into the first of the year. We just renewed their contracts already. We have to amend it, you know, to a certain extent. But again, I'm only one of five, so someone else, what do you got? Mr. Salvo, you have something?
No, I disagree with, you know, what you just said. The outside of the room of what, trying to get worked out on a public way, isn't really our purview to be involved with. It should be against, you know, what they're doing right now is negotiating and trying to work that out. We shouldn't be making decisions for them. I don't feel so we should be holding them up as something that's already been approved by the-
Mr. Steele?
So I'm kind of in agreement with you guys, too, on that. I feel that the conversation about this haring got a little bit more involved than it should have, but I don't think that's a bad thing. I think in the course of the past two months, it's my impression from an outsider that maybe you guys have spoken more about the problems going over there than you have in the past. And I would hope that we could move forward with the vote tonight. And regardless of the outcome, that you guys, you said you're really close to an agreement. I think it's in the best interest of both parties to get the agreement. So I would hope that regardless of how we voted tonight, you guys would continue to work to get that agreement. And again, keeping in mind that even if you came back and said that there wasn't an agreement in two weeks, we don't really have any jurisdiction over the Hastings Way. We were just trying to accommodate both parties a little bit. And honestly, I think that something good has come out of it. And I hope that you guys continue to communicate and, you know, it's got to be a win-win for both parties over there. But I think it can be if you guys work hard.
I, but again, you know, we're the licensing authority. So let's say six months from now, there is an issue. Let's say they can't get fire trucks in there, or there's a number of accidents happening, and there's some other issues that the business is generating. At any time, we can call for a hearing. We can bring you guys all back in and talk about it. I'll echo what's already been said. I think we're at a point where we have to back away and let you guys finish the job, because we are infringing on a private way, which really is, we have no reason, even as street supervisors, we have no jurisdiction over whatsoever. And we have to be careful. And I know originally, the association had an agreement where there was a number of parking spaces. I wasn't even aware of that, because it's none of my business. But I'm hearing that maybe that's going to change around a bit. But, you know, I think at this point, we've done all we can do to try to get you guys together. And we've got to be careful we don't cross over a line where we suddenly get involved in it. And we've got to be very careful about that.
If I could just make one more comment. Again, we're here in unison asking for a postponement. It's not like we're finding out surely Carol would want the vote tonight. Because, but to formulate this MOU of the understanding, really, that's the only leverage we have. Once you vote to approve it, then, I mean, she can just continue doing what she does. And, you know, part of the solution is having a conflict, if you will. So again, I would respectfully ask that you postpone.
I need to ask the applicant, are you in agreement that we extend it one more time? I mean, you guys need to tell us.
Well, we are working diligently on this and trying to get this Hastings Way, like I said, resolved. But again, we don't feel we have a, right, I don't think it has any bearing on what we're trying to do with the business end of it, you know, on her expansion. All it's doing is delaying her from moving on with the expansion part of the restaurant. So, I mean, that's our standard. That's-
I'm not hearing unis- I'm not, you're hearing-
We are going to go forward with this, Bob. Growing up, we've had another surveyor come in. We've done two plot plans. So we are going to go forward with this, but I would like to, I did what was asked of me to do. Do the guardrail, do, I got permission from Dan, and we added those four parking spaces for the original. That's what I am here for, but I am going to continue with them to find a solution so that we can work better with this. We're going to go forward with this. We're going to try and-
And again, our departments are telling us it's okay. What you're trying to do is okay, so. Anyway.
Assistant Joel Shapiro, Fort Carter Road trustee and homeowner. Even though you vote tonight, does it matter if the planning department board, or the planning, the planner, I guess, the town planner, has not gotten back with an acceptance of the latest plan?
See, I don't know how much jurisdiction, again, he's going to have over that plan, because it's none of our business.
I see.
I'm not sure he's-
Well, he will have jurisdiction. He doesn't have jurisdiction over the liquor license and the change of the building, but he, if, there probably was a site plan that was approved for that location originally. So any changes to the site is an amendment to that site plan, and they will have to review it and comment on it.
So the site plan changed. What is it again?
Say that again.
The site plan changed-
From the original one that was submitted?
Yeah.
It's basically just added a berm on Hastings Way, more defining the Hastings Way to the parking lot.
When you're going on Hastings on the left or the right?
The opening now would be created in the center, and it would have an island on the left and right and with a 35-foot opening for regressing and income.
So it would make it safer?
Yes.
Because we'll take away the parking on Hastings. I mean, that's the ultimate goal for us.
I see what you're doing.
Because that's where the traffic is.
I mean, both parties are looking together for one permanent solution so that we don't have to come before the board again, and we can all live happily ever after, hopefully.
But keep in mind, too, that when you guys made that deal, you didn't come to us and ask us. I mean, that was something you guys had to do, and this is basically, in my mind, the same thing. But it sounds to me like it's a better solution to the problem.
It is, and if planning considers it a minor remodification of that plan, the original plan, it can be dealt, you know, in-house as opposed to another hearing through planning as opposed to a major modification.
Okay. Mr. Unitz?
Just, and to mention again, if it sounds like you're coming to an agreement so that there's no parking on Hastings, and just a reminder again that Hastings is a private way, so if there is an issue with parking on Hastings, that's an issue that you'll have to deal with. We can't come down there and ticket and-
We understand.
Your voice, please.
Personally, I think that the applicants have met any obligations that we can put on them. And while things aren't perfect, it sounds like we're heading in the right direction. But I can't see where we have the right to keep delaying them from making the improvements they want to make. And I just, I think a lot of it has got to do with public and private roads. And it's, I mean, it's like a no man's land. We control the liquor license, but we don't control any of the land that's involved in it. Where if it was out on 123, although that'd be the state, but. But if it was on another, if it was on a town-approved road, we might have more authorization to do something. But it's, I think we've been fortunate enough to have two parties come together, working in the right direction. I think we've delayed it, though, to the point where it would be detrimental to the license holder to delay it much longer.
Anyone else?
We appreciate you listening to us.
Thank you.
And just because we're doing this doesn't mean we ask her to stop listening.
Well, you heard Carol. We're on a first-name basis, not disrespectful. As long as she's committing to work, we will work.
We heard that, too.
Right, yeah.
We heard that. So, I mean, that seems to be, you guys have come a long way. So I'll give you all credit for opening and communicating and listening to each other, and that's what it's all about. You're going to live together, all of you, so, which is a good thing. Any questions? Chair entertain a motion to close the haring.
So moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair entertain a motion to approve the alterations of premises for Kelly's Place at the Crossing Incorporated DBA Kelly's Place to expand its seating capacity by 20 more patrons in the adjacent space consisting of 990 square feet and also adding a service counter for the staff with refrigerator, sink, and coffee station to its commensurate all alcohol license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises at 292 East Main Street, Lord Mass.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. And I'll say it again, if there are some issues there at some point, you feel we need to get involved, and we're here to help you. But I'm pretty confident you guys will work this thing out. We have motion and second. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Salvo?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I too, of course, yes. Thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we tabled the renewal of the cable license, not a public hearing. We got in the renewal of the cable television license to Comcast of Massachusetts, too, Incorporated. Chair entertain a motion to remove the public hearing from the table. We didn't do it? Your motion?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Unitz?
We have-
Introduce anybody here?
We have Attorney William Solomon here, who has worked diligently with us over the last, is it two years now? It seems like it, in negotiations with Comcast and Jason Benjamin, who is the director at Norton Meteor Access.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
So long when you've been here before, I believe.
I, um, one time.
A while ago.
Yes. So good to be here. Thank you very much. As a former town council for 30 years, I actually enjoy watching the board work, so thank, it was an opportunity. Thank you. First, let me thank the town administrator, Mr. Unitz, Jason Benjamin, and the folks who really worked hard on this license. I know you have a copy of it. We provided a summary, but let me just walk you through the summary, if that's okay. And then we'll see if there are any questions. And I would ask you to vote to approve the license and to sign it. And we'll return it to Comcast for their signature. We have an email from them agreeing to the license already. Based on, and we've worked diligently for a long time, as the town managers indicated. And also, over the last two weeks, you know, every time you have a 50-some page document, even though a lot of the provisions have been nailed down, there's always a lot of discussion back and forth on the final issues. So briefly, as you know, this is another 10-year cable license. The current license is 10 years. 10 years is good. The world of cable is changing. The world, as you know, of video competition is changing. Now, Comcast is a company that likes being a cable company, that does a good job of being a cable company, and is prepared to enter into a fair license with the town. I, of course, work for the town. And so, given that, if a good license can be reached, and this is a good license, it's in the town's advantage, and I believe Comcast, too, to do a longer license. There's no benefit to a shorter license where, let's get another chance in three years or five years with the changing world, both in terms of competition, statutory risk, regulatory risk. Now's the time to get a good license. I want to say in that regard that I know the town manager and Jason would share this, that the work of the Comcast Government Affairs Representative, Bob Sullivan, experienced in municipal law and in government, was crucial to get this done. He met with the town and us early on. He heard what the concerns were to continue with the funding, to allow for the media center to grow and expand and to continue their good work. And through diligent negotiations on both sides, we were able to get a good agreement. I frankly feel we would not have got the same agreement if we didn't have someone who was tuned in to hearing the town's concerns. So moving on with the license, just to let you know, in the summary there, town, at the end of 2017, Comcast had 5,937 subscribers. Cable service availability, obviously, everyone who knows cable will continue to have that. If there's any expansion, extension of the system in the town, we have made the standard more favorable to the town. Now, if there's underground conduit in the ground in an area where Comcast might extend, the density has been cut in half to 30 dwelling units per mile. That's positive. Standard installation, it had been, it remains 170 feet for an aerial drop. So therefore, if you, when the cable line goes by your house and you need to connect, if you're within 170 feet, that's a standard, one prize, $50-some dollars, rather than paying the cost, which could be quite high. What the town was able to achieve in this license is to get a underground standard installation of 125 feet. That mirrors the 125 feet in the FCC's regulations for other purposes, and that's positive. So if someone is within 125 feet or further than 125 feet, that first 125 feet is for that one set price. So that can be a tremendous savings to a resident. PEG access support is now currently at 4.5% of gross annual revenues. That's going to be increasing to 5%. That's a large increase in terms of dollars. There's some dollars taken away from the 5% for some fees that are paid to the state and the town, but still, it's a material increase that's positive. Additionally, that 5% will be going against or multiplied by the gross annual revenue, which currently is a broad definition, but it's going to be broader. And going forward, any franchise fees that are paid by subscribers are part of the revenue package that Comcast determines how to pay the town the 5%. So that'll be an increase also of funding to the town and Norton Community Media. The issue that took the longest time, bullet point on the second page, was capital support for PEG access. And that amount is $290,000, which Comcast, after hearing the needs of the town, came back and offered. The final discussion there was the payment of that money in relationship to some of the video origination sites that are in the license. And as a result of those discussions that happened just concluded last week and this week, instead of $29,000 a year for 10 years, the first three years will be $50,000, and that'll allow Norton Community Media to both build in terms of its equipment and facility and potentially do some work to expand the video origination from remote sites to do more cable casting of programming in town. Three access channels continue. The PEG access video return sites are the sites that are now currently used, the Town Hall and the PEG access studio. That's a reduction from the list in the current site, but that had changed about five or six years ago when the studio changed its location. Those other origination sites no longer worked. Comcast has agreed to work with us, though, to see whether there is some coaxial cable in some of the other sites, the library, for instance, that goes to the Town Hall that might then be connected to the studio. Alternatively, that additional capital or the front loading of the capital is available to do wireless or other even fiber connections as the access corporation of the town deemed to be best. Cable service to public buildings continues. We have listed the public buildings in the license. Any new public building gets added. And then finally, you have two side letters. One side letter is the senior discount. The town administrator made it clear that the board was very interested in a senior discount. It's not a huge senior discount. I say to people, I still get a better discount than Calder or Brelins airs. But it's voluntary. They're not required to do it. $2 off standard service for financial qualifications. We were able, in the side letter, to get the list of financial qualifications increased, including field assistance or the state tax exemption folks get, seniors can get, based on income and assets. So that is the first time here in Norton, a senior discount, which the town administrator made clear was important. And then also, one of the first in the state, not the first, but the first handful, is a requirement, this is in a side letter agreement, that Comcast will provide one high-definition PEG access channel. That's been the big issue in, as you know, public education and government access. That's been the big issue in, as you know, public education, government access. All their equipment puts out a high-definition signal, most signals and cable are high-definition. They, they don't want to be left behind, and so we have a firm commitment in the, in the letter provided by Comcast, which they stand behind, is that they'll provide that channel within five years, or such earlier time as they determine, which frankly could be earlier, because they're now starting to, to roll this out. But, you know, there are not, you know, more than four communities in the state that have this as a commitment in a letter or a license, so that's good news for Norton, something that Jason Benjamin stressed in his, in the ascertainment work. He said, compiled a ascertainment report that was quite detailed, and his work on, on high-definition, I think, is what helped convince Bob Sullivan to go the extra mile for us and get us the side letter. Final point is, most of the side letters just say Comcast will come to talk to you. We didn't want to come talk to his letter, we wanted a commitment that they'll do it, and I thank Bob and Comcast for that. So in summary, that's the license, it's strong license. Again, five percent is the highest percentage support under, on the Cable Act federal law that'll allow your, your program, as we see here, and we know is, it's the way people find out about community, community groups engage to, to continue and thrive in a changing world. So, with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I would ask that the board vote approval, in your, in your votes approval, I'd ask that you just acknowledge the fact that there are two side letters, and then sign the license tonight, and then we'll get it through the town, we'll get it back to Comcast to be signed by them.
You mentioned fiber optics in your presentation, and it's probably something we hear the most about here in town. Why, why we're not offering that program to our residents? And I believe the town manager would be the first to tell you that, probably gets a call once a week about why we can't speed up our internet services and all that stuff by, by having fiber optics. When you mentioned the fiber optics part of that, what, what does that entail? What, what does that mean?
Well, I mean, fiber optics meaning the, the speed of Comcast internet service. You know, the, the, Norton doesn't have a competitor, not because the board of selection hasn't tried hard and the town manager hasn't tried hard, it's that Verizon went to certain places and they have not, they gave up FiOS, they haven't provided, they haven't built a system other than Boston, which is really wireless in, in large part, for about five years, so they're no longer in that system. Verizon plans, within five years, they say, and their goal is, they say to Wall Street and others, to be totally out of any cable or fiber, and to just be wireless. RCN, as you know, it's a company near, in the Boston area, but they, they're nowhere, you know, they don't even get Route twenty-eight, so despite the efforts of the, of the town, there's not another company that would, would, would come here and provide that service. You know, what's coming forward is, is the wireless, the 5G solution, where towns are rightly concerned about the access to their public way, and that's a, a large fight, but that service will be providing higher speed, higher speed data, and supposedly as fast as many of the fiber solutions, but I'm sure not as fast. So, with respect to Comcast, we only regulate the cable portion, but nothing stops the town, or people, or the public, but the town, from expressing, as a town, the concern about that, and asking Comcast what actions they, they might or will take to provide higher speeds. Like, one of the first things you want to find out is, are your speeds lower than what Comcast is providing elsewhere? If that's the case, you want to let them know that they, they need, they certainly need to take action. But that is outside of the cable license, cable license in a world where cable's cable, telephone's telephone, and the internet's the internet. So apart from raising the issue, and even inviting them to a board meeting to discuss it, and, you know, to Comcast's credit, Comcast, based on the Cable Act and based on the fact it had been a smaller company, they still understand that, that the best perspective for them, and frankly, for everyone, is to sit down and talk to the town, so that when we call up Bob Sullivan and ask to meet, or if he asks to meet, Bob Sullivan of Comcast is here at the Town Hall with all of us, and we had a number of meetings here. In a world where if you did that with Apple, or Google, or Facebook, and said, hey, come to Town Hall next week, there'd be nobody there. So, to Comcast's credit, they've grown up in a world where they respect and, and converse with, with local government, so I wouldn't be shy about asking them to do that in an area that you don't regulate, because you're concerned about the public interest. There will be nothing here that will affect those speeds. Comcast does provide voluntarily more basic internet service to public schools and library, and I think your public schools and library probably take advantage of that, but apart from that, there'd be nothing here that would affect their, their internet speed, but I encourage you to follow up, particularly with Bob Sullivan, because he's very responsive. I should say, there's one other thing that they're proud of, and Bob brought some material. They have the Internet Essentials Program, which is for students who are, meet certain income guides, which have been raised, for internet for like, ten dollars a month, and I think there are very, very, very low-cost computer, laptops that are provided, and the town does have that information, but anyone should feel free to contact Comcast. And now, they, they provide that same service for qualifying seniors and, and for veterans. So that is, get about ten dollars a month or so, encourage anyone to contact Comcast about that, and that's one of the things that their government affairs managers try to stress.
And I appreciate that information, I wasn't aware of it, I'm not sure anyone else was either, but we, I would ask the town manager to set up a meeting with Bob Sullivan to find out what exactly.
Yeah, he loves to come out, go here, the senior center, give out brochures, they, they, you know, they, they both have a legal obligation and a pride in that service, and you're right, it needs to be, as much as they try, better publicized, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, we, I wasn't aware of it. And I think the, the issue we hear the most is speed.
Yeah.
And, you know, Verizon's been out there tooting their horn all this time about how they're going to put all these different high-speed programs in, and FiOS and all these things, and this guy's getting all the phone calls, saying, how come we can't get it? Well, if it's not here, we can't offer it. And, and the old contract that allowed us to entertain agreements with other, other sources, that's still in, you still get, it's totally not exclusive.
And in addition to that, with respect to this issue of going from remote areas and buildings and connecting to the studio, this license makes clear that, that the town is, or the access corp is, is fully able to do that, so that if you want programming from another location, whether by wireless or fiber, you can connect that to the, the studio. Comcast has an obligation to pick that up, as long as this is consistent with their system, and that's one of the things we, we specifically did put in the license. You know, I'd say, my wife's the town administrator in Western Mass, in the town of Leverett. Leverett, it's a different world, it's next to the town, I live in New Salem, and we don't have broadband yet. And the, what Leverett did was built their own municipal fiber, municipal fiber to the home, they had a two-point-four million dollar debt exclusion, and they, they provide a service, like eighty, ninety dollars a month at a gigabyte. It's, it's very hard to do that in a, in a community if there's two companies. In a community where there's one company in Eastern Massachusetts, it's still a challenge, but it's something, you know, the, the town could look into, and one of the things, if you reach out to the town of Leverett, they, they're happy to come out and speak to people of what they did. There are some towns looking at that, so that's, you know, that's something that's possible to look at, it's a challenge, but it's not an impossibility. That service would be internet and telephone, but not cable. And then, and maybe that discussion would encourage Comcast to, to raise their speeds?
Yeah, that's good.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding something correctly. Did you say that they're committed to providing the peg HD within five years?
Yes.
Because the letter says no sooner than sixty months from one-one-twenty-nineteen, unless they decide to do it earlier. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding which way.
If it says no sooner, I apologize, let me take a look, he wrote it, it says no sooner, well, no.
Nope. No sooner than sixty days.
Sixty months.
Sixty months.
Okay.
But then it says the next line.
At their discretion, sure, I just wanted to make sure, so when we vote, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
So, their, their commitment is, is to do, you're, you're correct, to do it in five years.
Okay. Unless they decide to do it.
I apologize, I misspoke. To do it within five, to do it in five years. They don't have to do it sooner, they're committed to doing it in five years, but we, and we, the town, and, 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 and me as your counsel, in the very first conversation where we worked this out with Bob, said, look, we don't want it to say that, because what will happen is that someone at Comcast will say, well, the town said to wait five years. No, we didn't say to wait five years. So if you can do it sooner, at your discretion, that'd be great, and Bob said yes, and he got a yes on that, so that's correct. It'll be five years or such sooner time as they decide. That said, again, in the relationship, and Bob Sullivan's a good government affairs person, I would say, within six months or a year, as this becomes more ubiquitous around the state, I would invite Bob in and say, hey, Bob, is there, can you, can you speed this up? My guess is that they will do it sooner than the five years, but they were wary to commit at this point. Thank you for that clarification.
Brammo?
My question, basically, more for Jason and maybe Roy. On the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we're getting, basically for hardware, is there some way that we can, I mean, get a, an accounting on a regular basis to see where it's being used?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have, we have an accountant.
No, it's just that, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, to make sure, first of all, that it's going for hardware, and maybe have somebody come in and explain to us what the hardware is, why we, why we need this hardware, why we're getting this hardware instead of a connection at the library, you know, something to, maybe, you might have a strategic plan, if you could share that with us.
Jason had a capital budget set up as part of this contract negotiation, and we certainly can provide you copies with that, of that capital budget, of what that money would be spent on, and I think you actually had more requested than the monies came through and approved.
Yeah, so basically, because it's a ten-year agreement, as you know, technology moves forward very rapidly, and we have technology that's aging out already.
Right.
So it's more just replacing, it just, it's like a reset, basically, from, you know, to keep us current with what the current trends are, and also the fact that we never got capital in our last license. We've always been running out of our operating budget, it's always been ad hoc, so for the first time, we have the opportunity to use the leverage that comes with having capital, just like, operating like a normal business should. So that, and that's all accounted for, and that's something that we can certainly, you know, make, I can email you a copy of the capital plan that we've already worked on.
I'm, I'm, I don't, because I was involved in it, I understand, it's just that we always seem to be playing catch-up. We're always.
Yeah.
We're always behind the curve on the technology, and I understand this is to try to bring us up, up to date. If we could just have something to, you know, hang a hat on and say, this is what we're doing, and this is the reason we're.
Yeah, and as Bill said, it's great that we have, in this town, that we're getting an HD agreement, because the majority of towns in the Commonwealth don't even have that, and that's been, that's been the bottleneck, because we're originating in HD on our end, but when we send it to Comcast, it's not turning into HD, it's staying SD. So people at home are seeing an SD signal.
Thank God.
And that's, that's really more what it's, what it is, but.
So in other words, they shouldn't have bought that good television then.
Well, every other channel works, yeah.
Every, every, one but the three, local access.
Yeah.
I, I would also say that, keep in mind that we have fiber optics in town, that the cable committee paid to install, and it runs from the White Street pits, the pine tree up there, all the way to the water department on John Scott Boulevard, okay, including stops, the main trunk stops at the Charlie Fire Station. All of the town buildings and all the schools are served off of that fiber for, for voice, data, video, and who knows, there's plenty of spare capacity for the future. So, and that was paid out of the operating budget, not the capital appropriation. Certainly, the capital budget that we now have will pay for that HD when we get it.
The record show, Mr. Ray Cord, by the way, that people know who you are.
Oh, sorry about that.
We know who you are. Any other questions? Sounds like it's a better, I mean, obviously, we're getting a better deal than we did a lot of times.
Yeah.
Gary Buck was still involved?
He is, he's, he's the director who Bob Sullivan reports to, that's correct, yeah. He had been.
Back in my day, we were negotiating together, so.
We were on the phone with him.
The question is, sure, it's a public hearing, so you do, you want to ask the public further if they have any questions, and I'll have the final statement at the end.
I've also prepared a five-minute presentation, just to kind of recap what we've been doing over the past license period, so, if you guys want to.
The voice of Norton, the Norton News Center there.
You're a pretty talent, huh?
Yeah, oh, it is. Beautiful. That's what a video does.
Yeah. All done by a drone?
Yes.
Exercise. Yoga with Bob.
That's it.
All done by yours truly. Peter J. Wiggins, the voice of Norton.
That's right.
Jason?
We couldn't hear you, though.
Yeah.
We're not gonna watch the Three Stooges, huh?
It's like, you back to the Peter Channel.
Sometimes we're referred that way, so it just...
That's the Five Stooges, Bob.
You don't want to confuse anybody, you know?
That's right. That's up to the Peter Channel, too.
That's right.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments?
Just one other thing, while I was watching all the different things that you cover, several times we've had Wheaton in, and I've mentioned to them it'd be nice to get them to contribute to the video. And I was just wondering, have you ever approached them to, I mean, I don't know if they, if they telecast their sporting events, or...
Yeah, we, we have a Wheaton liaison, Ellen Kane, and she has plugged us in with Mike Gracia, and the president, and the arts department, and the athletics department, and we have a really good collaboration going with them, the best it's ever been. Um, since we have, had the new administration come in, it's been amazing, so.
Yeah, no, it's just, I mean, we always talk about, you know, there's Wheaton and there's Norton. And I thought sports especially was a, a good avenue to bridge the gap.
Oh, yeah. We do Lions coverage, too.
See, I, I just don't look at Channel Nine, or would you have a channel that, that one's on?
Yeah, that would be on Channel fifteen.
Okay. I'll check fifteen then.
I just think that they do a great job. I think it's a great service to the community.
Yeah. I like the, I like the pictures. The drone pictures are very good.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you about using some of those for something else later on.
Yeah, that was, that was Aerial Integration Consulting that did that.
This is very clear, but, so, it isn't clear in my house, but is that what's gonna change?
That's, that's right. That's, that's what it is. That's what's been so frustrating for us, because we're creating that, and then when we put it out there, it goes...
What a big difference.
SD, yeah.
Can we keep the yoga with Bob and SD, though, please?
A big difference. I can remember when I first got cable, it was $9.95 a month.
Yep.
We thought that was very expensive.
Yep.
Back in the eighties, work was on the wrong cable vision.
I can only do that again.
Any other questions? Stunners? Anything? Nope. So the motion is...
Do we have a motion? We have to close the hearing.
Uh, yeah, probably. Anyone in the audience want to say anything? By the way, this is a public hearing.
Yep, it's the best, it's the best media center in the town, and it includes yours truly as the voice of Norton, and it, and I blew it very well with these, and it is the best in town, just like, along with the Peter Channel, which I cover everything in Norton, just like the Norton Media Center does, but we're in competition. That's right, Jason?
Watch out for that competition, so. Okay.
All right.
So, go back to my agenda here.
Who do we close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Motion second. Oh, there's a favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, it is to...
Prove the, uh, prove the license, and vote to prove the license, and just make note that there are two accompanying, there are two side letters that are, have accompanied this, this process.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Unis, you all sit. All set. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Any animus? Thank you.
Great. Let me assign that also. And Mike, if, I think what I'll, I'll, they've been signed? Great. And I'll, I'll send them to Comcast tomorrow morning. And then just 30 seconds. Again, I'd like to thank the board and, and thank town manager units. Uh, I work in a lot of towns, and sometimes there are managers who only get involved when they pass the license around to be signed. That we would not have had this result if it hadn't been for the town manager's involvement from the beginning, at the very beginning, it was crucial, uh, his involvement was crucial to get heard and to, and to get a, a fair discussion and offer. And then this past week, Mike was instrumental in closing the final part of the deal, so I want to thank him, and just to say that, that that happens in towns, but it doesn't always, and his work here was outstanding, and thank him for that work, and let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you all for your hard work. Mike, for your work, and Jason, we appreciate it. Ray, back there in the corner, we appreciate all your help.
Thank you, Jason.
Well, you're on the committee, too, right?
Yes.
And you, too, Brad. Thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We can put in some clearer, clearer pictures in the future, and the wireless is really gonna be interesting to see how that, that'll shake out next year.
Yeah. Well, I think you can get somewhere with Comcast on that, so, uh, and I'll let them know, and, uh, I think you can make some progress. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. I, I attended a meeting, I asked to be, this three-year strategy program for town services. I attended a school's, uh, strategic planning committee meeting, um, last week, and it was an all-day event. And it was interesting to sit and listen to all the different ideas that were thrown around. And what they did basically is they came up with, I don't know, 20 different ideas on how to improve the system, how to make it work better. And then broke up into small groups, and we tried to prioritize some of the issues that we felt should be addressed sooner than later. And it was mentioned that maybe the town should do the same thing, the town side of government. Now, obviously, it's not the same thing. I mean, you're not dealing with students and administration. I mean, there's a lot of difference between the two organizations, but at the same time, it really isn't. And what I'm going to ask the board to consider, and the town manager, is to come up with a, have a meeting of the parliament heads, all of the parliament heads, come up with what they feel is, say, the three strongest things that they need to address in the next three years. And they kind of put a plan together on how they can achieve that, that goal in the next few years. And I don't know what those are. There may not be any. I don't know. But I think it's worth looking into. Um, I mean, one thing that I've talked about in the past that could be considered, I'm not suggesting has to be, is a town-wide, town-wide timekeeping program. We, software is out there today, you know, find out if there's any, we should be looking at something like that. But not only does it save a lot of time, it saves a lot of manpower, because it's, it's all done electronically. I know some departments have it already, most departments don't.
We're still manual on that? We're still manually timed?
Oh, yeah, time sheets. So, I mean, that's maybe one thing that could be considered as, as a priority, I, I would think. Um, I know, at one time, I had 19 stores, and I could sit in front of a computer for half an hour, and it was all gone. I mean, that's all I had to do as a manager.
Yeah.
We have been having that discussion with the treasurer, that, that system should be put in place, and you'll know how much vacation time you have.
Yeah.
And also, no more paper pay stubs. If you, if you want, if you have to print one out, then you go online.
Yeah.
You print it out, but no more pay stubs.
So my suggestion is, again, to have the town manager sit down.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, the same thing. I used to go online and find out what my pay was for the week. I could print it out if I wanted a copy of it, my pay stub. But it takes care of a lot of paper, too.
Yeah.
It goes away. But the time savings from the old pen, and I've done it all, believe me, you know, the old pen and paper to everything today, and don't get smart over there, I can see it. Uh, the point is that it's, it's just, it's time. Look at stuff like that. I'm, I don't want to dwell on just that one subject.
Well, it goes, it goes back to the two top priorities, HR and IT.
Well, whatever it is. So, you know, come back, meet with your people, come back to us and say, look, these are the three priorities that all our town agencies believe we have to, have to make a priority. We have to be a part of it. But we don't know what their priorities are until you guys come back and tell us. You know, I don't want to hear about how we need a new town hall. I mean, everybody knows we need one. I'm talking about some of the things that we do daily, what your building inspector's doing today with his programs, and what he's doing with the electronic versions of permitting and stuff. We, we're so far in the, so far beyond that. We should have been doing that years ago.
Yep.
But that's a program that all departments can roll into and use at some point. That may be one of their priorities. But again, and sometimes it costs money. So if you're looking at it in advance, you can plan what your future's gonna do, and how much it's gonna cost. So, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe come up with three, and just come back and just kind of give us an idea of what, what everybody's thinking in town hall, and, and let us know what, which, which direction we should be looking at also. I mean, we talk about it ourselves. Look at the paper we have here. We should be, it should be electronic. We should be looking at some kind of a pad, iPad, or something, Chromebook or something we should be looking at, instead of all this paper we generate constantly.
Yep.
I've got the estimate, so.
Again, go back and look at the different, because there may be other committees that should be doing it, too. Not just us. Maybe we should looking at, looking at this as a broad, you know...
Because I wonder how much time it's, we're allocating for people to just put, prepare the stuff and put it together. Even if I just the paper costs. I mean, I know that it's...
Takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
If you just send it out to us, we can look at it as it's happening.
You can always print it later, if you had to.
Yeah, you can. If you want a hard copy, and sometimes I do that, I want to see it. And I might want to refer to it or something. But anyway, if you can do that. And I figure, you know, if we can come back, I know it's the end of the year, but, you know, maybe by, I don't know, April 1st, just have a plan where we need to be going, maybe before the next town meeting, which we're talking about, where we see ourselves going. And the other thing is, living on Pine Street and watching all the improve, all the additional industry and, and improvements of the Taunton Industrial Park in the Norton Commerce Center, um, the amount of traffic that's generated from it, and you know what? I don't have a problem with it. I have a problem with the guy driving by me at 70 miles an hour yesterday, but other than that, I don't have a problem with it as far as, you know, people using it. But I do have a problem with the big trucks. And an example right now of the Wheaton Construction on that new dormitory, every day, two, three times a day, they're trying to move these 52-footers and turn them on Pine and Plain and make, go back. That's just one example. But we're getting a lot of complaints about side streets being utilized by vehicles that are not designed to be used for. We don't have sidewalks. Pine Street from Plain Street has a no-truck sign, no trucking sign. Most ignore it, but I have noticed it has slowed down a bit. It's not as much as it used to be. Um, before we do the Leonard Street, the Blue Star Industrial Park on Leonard Street, I think it's important for us to, to be proactive and start putting up signs now rather than later. And what I'm suggesting we talk about is Burt Street and Leonard Street. And obviously, Leonard Street in the industrial park, you have to have trucks.
Yep.
But where it goes, turns into the residential end of it, back to, uh, the Plain Street, that should be posted now as no trucking. Get these people used to the fact that we're not going to use that. When I went to a meeting about the Blue Star Park, I suggested to the developer that the intersection at the end of their development, where it does go onto Leonard Street, that that be designed so no truck can make the turn. That it should be designed so that, I mean, box, small box trucks, UPS truck, yeah, I get it. Time with the big trucks. They can't make the corner. Design it that way so they, to discourage them, and have a sign of saying no trucks. Uh, Burt Street's gonna be the same thing. Burt Street is not wide enough for these big...
Yep.
52-footers to be going down. So I'd like the board to consider putting up signs, and we've talked about South Washington Street before.
That's pretty bad, South Washington.
Yeah, South Washington is pretty bad.
And I don't know, I know it goes, I know we can't...
We can't do that one.
Do it from one town to the city of Taunton, we can't do it. But I thought at one point we, we were trying to work out an agreement where we could do it. And I don't know what happened, because if you think about it, our South Washington Street turns into their, what's the name of that street? It's a different name.
Boynton?
Boynton, Boyden, Boyden.
Yeah.
But that turns, it turns into Boyden on the line. All I'm suggesting is from South Washington Street, we have, we have trucks going in Boynton into our industrial park. But if South Washington Street were no trucking, beyond the industrial park, we had signs put up there, and all the way back, we would discourage these trucks from coming through. Last, wasn't last week, two weeks ago, I stopped at the end of Plain Street and waited for two 52-foot trucks that had just come off East Main Street. I don't know how the hell they make that corner. I stopped and let them both go through, because I was amazed at the size of these trucks trying to go through that very narrow street in that, in that neighborhood. So would you, I'm, I'm, what I'm suggesting is, Mike, work with the fire and police department and find out what it would take for us to put these signs up. And that includes Washington.
We did South Washington.
Where?
I don't remember now, but Keith did, I know he did signs out by Plain, and he did signs up by 123, and he also put a sign at the exit coming out of the industrial park showing, uh, 495 with an arrow to the right.
Yeah. I thought we did something, but you know what? We need bigger signs, because they're not paying attention to them. They aren't. They're not, they're not seeing them, or whatever. Perfect example is those 252s the other, the other day. They, they shouldn't have been on those streets. So maybe we need more signs. I'm not sure, but we gotta, we gotta do something to control it. Mary, you're not jogging through there anymore, are you?
No, you know what? I was just gonna say, you know, living over there, South Washington Street is definitely worse than Pine, right? It's, the trucks ought to go down there, and the, and the traffic is pretty fast. Um, so I know it was addressed, gosh, was it maybe a year and a half ago with, um, the neighbors over there at the four-way stop, right? And then Keith and, the police just worked together, they put some signs up. Um...
And the police were using that guy's driveway.
Yeah, to stop. And I mean, that's, you know, in the long run, I don't know how effective that really is. But, you know, one thing that I think might be effective, and I could be totally wrong, but have you guys, um, seen they, they have the, um, speed, um, lights?
Yeah. Soul power.
They're, uh...
And it's like on a, a post or something?
Like radar on a, on a pole.
Yeah, the radar. And as you come up, it starts flashing your...
Tells you you're going over.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if that's something we could get with highway money, or, um, I just feel like if we put it at the north part of South Washington Street, and then maybe right on the other side of the four-way stop to just, I, it actually works for me. I mean, I think a lot of people who drive, then also like, oh my God, I'm going, I'm on 45 and it's a 30, you know, I just, I don't know.
It works for nature, yeah.
It, it definitely.
Here's a huge problem right now. The old Burris and Rhodes Building is being leased out by Amazon, and there's a million trucks there.
Is that right? Amazon is in there?
So, beginning, I think it was Monday, there was a four-car accident inside the parking lot. Two different accidents. One person got transported to the hospital. Two weeks prior to that, there was an accident in the parking lot. And they hiring all these people with these vans and box trucks to do deliveries. They're just, they get there four in the morning, everybody's go, go, go. They even been, they, I've even heard them, police go down there for speeding at 4:30 in the morning, coming out of there.
Where, where is this?
South Washington Street, Burris and Rhodes. It's an old Mazda building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know how long this is for, if it's for short term, this after holidays, but it's very active, and a lot of vehicles there.
And everybody's in a hurry.
Everybody's in a hurry.
So anyway, Mike, if you could, okay, if, maybe take a, have, take a, have the police department look at South Washington, see if we need more signs. But Burt pointed, I think we need to address those now, so we get people used to the fact that they can't be using these big trucks to go into our new industrial park. We do it ahead of time, maybe it'll, maybe it'll defray some of that from happening. I don't know. They gotta redesign for us, and we have to enforce it once in a while. We gotta stop them and say they can't do that. I'm getting a lot of calls on the Boston Globe trucks.
On the what?
Boston Globe. They're in the, they're in the...
Industrial Park.
Industrial Park in Taunton. They have a huge building over there.
Really? They're looking at my paper in time? They're right here in Taunton.
They're big, they're big trucks, they're box trucks, they're going out at four o'clock in the morning, and I'm hearing a lot about that. So maybe we need to, give them a call and say, hey, look, do us a favor, use the highway. I mean, if I was going from there to Attleboro, I would go down our streets. I get that. You know, I wouldn't understand why they're, why they're using those, those streets, but, you know, I haven't seen them, I'm not up there time of day, so I don't know.
I just think if, you know... I just think if, you know, whatever our rights are to, with our pervy to, to do whatever we need to do, I mean, if a few of them got pulled over once in a while, not, not so much give a ticket, but just, this is a warning, let your other people know, you know, it's not going to be tolerated if it keeps up, we will be getting a ticket.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking.
They'll spread the word.
And I think we need to do, we, we need to be proactive and get this stuff out there soon and later. Let's not wait for them to be using the road and then try to stop it. Let's try to stop it now. So if you can get back to us on that, I'd appreciate it. Anyone else want to add anything to it?
What are we on? Sorry.
Selectmen's Report mail?
No, I.
I don't care about that. Update on the town hall feasibility study, Mr. Unets. Now, he wouldn't correct me if it was something I was on.
No, I would have skipped that. Just want to show you, I know I sent this to you, but if, I figured I'd show it on the screen so people at home can see it and see where, where the architects are now in their exploration of the town hall. I won't go into this slide because you won't see it. But this is talking about what's going to be on is first floor, second floor, square footage wise. And then I'll get into the different sites that they're, they're looking at. The first site would be if a town hall was built here, just the town hall, and the senior center something else, somewhere else. And where they'd be looking to build would be right behind us and then rip this portion of the building down. And this just gives you a, a concept, like the selectmen's meeting room would be on the first floor on the outside of the building, so it could be used at other times by groups. This over here is almost like a placeholder, depending on if we go together with the COA, there would be a possibility of a community room in between the two buildings that could be shared space and could be used by other groups in town. And also, in case of disaster, we'd have generators and we'll have a community room with a kitchen so that people can come and be in a warm place in the winter if they don't have power. And we could have a way to cook some food for them. This just shows you, you know, you see the existing building up front, and then the new building would be built between the existing building and the Highway Department. And this just gives you an idea of a scheme on what the building would look like. And you can see the fire department on the top picture, picture one, you can see the fire department where that's located out front and then the town hall behind it. And with this building torn down, we'd expand the parking on this side of the building and also have parking down by, closer to the building. Just some different concepts of it. And on that picture on the right, you can see which would be that community room and the selectmen's meeting room would be on the other side.
The one that looks like a three season room?
The one on the right, yeah, that would be like the community room connecting the two, if, if there were two buildings together. When we get to the next site, this is the site down on Elm Street, more or less the same configuration of the building, just placed in a different way. On the left, you can see the picture of the existing building that would be torn down. And then on the right, you can see the orange being the town hall and then the hashed in being what would be the senior center. And so there'd be parking up on the other side of the senior center, there'd be a little parking out front, and then there'd also be the parking lot across the street for the town hall. Just on the left, you can see that concept where purple would be the senior center, the blue would be the common area that would be a room that could be accessed by residents when the other two buildings are closed, so that the public, if they need a meeting space on Saturdays or Sundays, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whoever, could use that. And then it also could work as a shelter during storm events.
This is where the Reed and Biden facility is right now. We're in the process of cleaning that up. And one of the stipulations is once it is cleaned, the town has to take possession of it. We have to come up with a use for it. We can't sell it. So that's why we're looking at that as a possibility of a site.
There's a, just another look of somehow the buildings would be connected. On the left side of the building, you can see how the buildings would be connected, the two buildings. That's just a look from the intersection across an elm. There'd have to be walls because of the slope in that area. The third site that is kind of right now looked at as a site that would be too expensive for this development would be up on East Main, on the other side of 495, behind where Dunkin' Donuts is, behind that plaza. And this is where you see all those structures up on the top, that's Red Mill Village. As I get in further, here's a concept on the right. You can just see, by the time you get to where we would be building the building, that's a lot of roadway and infrastructure to get in back there. So this is a long shot option, but just a, a third option to look at. The only other two options we have for sites, we'll make one last offer next door in between us and the police department, see if there's any access on that. And then we're also looking at a site down by, for the senior center, down by 120 West Main. That would be a possibility if we could acquire that, if we had to. Obviously, the goal is to use land that we don't have to pay for.
I mean, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this so far, and I understand there's a lot of input from department heads and townspeople about what's happening with it. The vision I, I, I want to see, and I, I think is very important to me, is that community room connection somewhere. We have to have a place where if we have a power outage in the summer or the winter, they need heat or air conditioning, we need emergency kitchens and that type of stuff, that's very important. We received a letter today, couple, last couple of days, telling us that the high school, you know, there's some concern about using the high school for our town election. As an example, especially the one coming up could be a lot of, could be a lot of traffic. And during the last election, the federal election, there was all kinds of chaos. People getting, kids were getting home late from school. It did jam up the system quite a bit. And they have a real concern about why we shouldn't do that. Well, unfortunately, we don't have a building we can do that in at any time. People should know where to go for an election, they should know where to go for an emergency, and we should have a centralized location where people don't have to pick up the phone and call dispatch and say, what do I do? You know where to go. And the other thing we don't have is public access to a community room where, like Mike mentioned, if the Boy Scouts want to have a room or if they, if we want, we want to have a dance for the kids, what are we going to do? We don't have anything in town that we're able to do that with. So we start looking at lots, in my opinion, you look at a lot and you separate the two buildings, the COA and the town hall, it's going to be an additional cost. It's going to take additional maintenance, travel time, all that stuff that goes with it. And it would be nice to pull them together. I don't care where they are, it would be nice to put them somewhere together. Putting a town hall behind this one is a beautiful building being erected behind the fire station and our DPW garage, which needs to be replaced also. You know, I mean, we're, we're taking, we're taking the short end of it, but not looking to the future of it. And again, my opinion is, when we build this thing, it's going to be the last one we're ever going to build. And we, we gotta do it right. And we may have to spend a few extra dollars, but we gotta do it right. So wherever it ends up, it would be nice that both buildings were attached. I'm not saying that they can't be all back here and to the side of it or whatever, but we should have a, a community area where people can, can be, can use it when we need it, you know? How far along are they with the COA building?
There's a meeting Monday night. Both architects are going to be there at seven o'clock here in the break room. So we'll see. I know they were still analyzing, last I knew they were analyzing all their surveys from the seniors and hopefully they'll have a concept Monday night.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, one question on the site, last site down near 495. The land between 495 and where it was, was that all wet?
You mean on the other side of, by, behind Dunkin' Donuts? There is some wet way back, but there is some upland there too.
It's all owned by, it's all owned by Mass Highway.
I realize that, it's just that at one point, we, we had been told we might be able to get some of that.
We're still working on it.
And so I just didn't know if the reason was squeezed up next to Red Mill was because of the topography, the fact of.
Well, that was, no, that was because that's the parcel that the town owns right now.
We already own that one. We don't own the other three that are in there, so. Yeah, we've been talking to Mass Highway about maybe we won't, we won't develop it, maybe doing some kind of development in there which could include a town hall, you know, using our space and they could use theirs for. We're, we're in the holidays now, so you can't get an answer to probably the first of the year if you're lucky, let's see how, how things work out. Any else?
Nope.
Can you have any else on your list I skipped? Selectmen's Report mail, Mr. Salvo. Mr. Brownmore?
What's that?
Mr. Steele?
I do, I have just a quick things, just to reiterate what Jason and Delora mentioned earlier tonight, that Fios is not in the Town of Norton because Verizon doesn't want it to be here. I can't even tell you how many times I see this pop up on Facebook that, you know, what are the selectmen doing, they're not moving the town forward. This has nothing to do with us. So I would encourage also having, what is it, Bob Sullivan from Comcast come into one of our meetings anyways, maybe we can get some more press out there that if people want to complain, call Verizon, not the town hall, number one. And then the other thing is, I know the assessors have been going around. So I'm just wondering if maybe Denise could come in to our next meeting and maybe re-educate the public on what the assessors are doing knocking on doors. You know, there've been comments out there that are being made that, you know, not going to let them in the house, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, the number one thing we need to keep in mind, and it's disappointing that one of the people encouraging the public not to open the door for the assessors is a FinCom member. This is where the revenue from this town comes from, is from our, our residential taxes. We don't have a big tax base here. So the assessors need to do the job, they need to do the job right, make sure that the taxes that are being assessed are correct. So if she could come in, and one thing that I think, one criticism that I saw that I think actually has some merit is there was some concern that when people are knocking on the door, they don't have proper identification for the Town of Norton. So why not create a couple Town of Norton tax assessor badges with.
They should.
They're supposed to have.
Yeah, they should have.
So maybe people are not like, we're not getting the truth about it.
I'll check with Denise, because the fire department didn't make badges, so I'll.
Oh, good, perfect. So maybe we could just have, I, I don't know if you guys agree, but maybe have her come in and just do a little public service announcement of what they're doing and.
And they do have a private company that works with them too, so that might be the issue.
Oh, that could be, because you know what? I did hear that.
If it wasn't a woman, it was a guy, it would be the private company.
The guy was the private company?
I asked them to come to my house, not this time, the last time around, and they had a name badge on it, private company.
Yeah.
With their picture and their name on it, who they represented, and they just measured the outside of my house. They want to come in, they could come in, but they just measured the outside.
I will, I'll check and get back to you right away on the ID, whether people do.
Yeah, that, that seems to be one of the biggest, or one of the most common things that I'm hearing, is that there's not identification. Maybe it's just not clear identification. And it could be completely, you know, you hear things, I don't know what's true, what's not true, but one, if we could just have her in and set the record straight of what they're doing, why they're doing it, and why it's important for us to let them on the property.
Maybe make it clear on the town website what those identification should look like, because people will flash something, and I know people are skeptical about ever letting people into their houses as well.
And you know, sometimes they, they do an assessment, they find out that there's something there that isn't there.
Right.
It can, it can go either way.
Yep.
You know, sometimes it's, it's just not there. I had, I had someone recently say that he, they were assessed for this huge porch on the back of, on the back of the house that wasn't there. So their taxes actually went down because of it, but.
And the other thing about it is, if you don't let them in, they're still going to assess, right? So they're not going to keep your house assessed at, you know, when they were in 10 years ago. So if you don't let them in, they're going to take a guess, and they could, they could guess wrong, they could guess high on it. So I, it just, I just think it's in the best interest of both the town side and the public side to just get a little bit more education out there on what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Usually it's people who have done things improvements on their home that they didn't prove necessary permits to do so, and they don't want people to know it.
Yeah.
So that's usually the bigger case, what happens. Any else?
That's it for me.
Superiority?
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, safe season.
That's right.
Is this our last meeting?
Yeah, between, well, we have one between Christmas and New Year's, but this is our last before Christmas.
Christmas and New Year's, we are?
Yeah, we're meeting the 27th this year.
Seriously?
Yeah.
I may not be here for that. Maybe away.
We all know that there's always that license that comes in at the, you know, between.
Yeah, but we told them all.
But there's a reason, there's a reason why we're meeting on the 27th. I forget what it is.
We have one slack.
Good, he'll have to wait until January.
I'm, I'm not chasing.
Nope.
It's been the same person year after year after year. I'm not chasing. January 1st, we'll send the police down to shut the place down until the, the next selectmen's meeting, which will be the second week in January.
Ten emotional.
Can I back up? Could be a successor coming in the January meeting instead of December.
Yeah, she's on vacation actually, the 27th, so.
There's a reason we're meeting on 27th, I don't remember what it is. There's a reason for it.
May that have something to do with the town meeting? Is it the town meeting?
I don't know, I know there's a reason we're meeting, so.
That'd be a good reason.
You were here when we discussed it.
I know, but.
And you didn't have a problem with it then.
I know, because it was so far away.
Now, now you're going to have a problem with it. Make a motion to approve payroll warrant, PR 19-12 for the weekend of December 1st, 2018, warrant dated December 6, 2018, in the amount of $1,681,032.30.
Second.
Motion to second. Others in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, that's unanimous. Chair, maintain a motion to approve invoice warrant, AP 19-23 dated December 6, 2018, in the amount of $1,350,417.57.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Chair, maintain a motion to approve invoice warrant, AP 19-24 dated December 13, 2018, in the amount of $527,712.59.
Second.
Motion to second. For a discussion. Chair, none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. We have two sets of minutes, November 15, 2018, and November 29, 2018. Both in your files, everyone have a chance to review those. And so, Chair, maintain a motion to approve those as written.
So moved.
To approve minutes of November 15, 2018, as written.
Second.
Motion to second. Motion to second. Any further discussion? Chair, none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Uh, next meeting's agenda is the twenty-seventh of December?
I didn't do the twenty-ninth, I was, I wasn't here.
Okay.
You got that, Jen?
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, as written.
Second.
Your motion is second, any further discussion? Chair, none others in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one in one vote. Next meeting's agenda is December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. We do have an exec session we're supposed to have that night. And there's something else too, we're gonna, there's a appointment, uh, we have a letter in our files today for someone who wants to join the Norton Historical Society, that'll be taken care of. And I know there's something else out there that we're supposed to be doing that very often, so. Couple final, uh, notices, uh, we'd, we'd like to wish, uh, Mr. Salvo a happy sixtieth birthday.
Oh, geez, thank you.
Wow.
Sixty, sixty, whoa.
It's a long way away for me.
I know, it's something, something in it.
You might be the oldest one here, come to think of it.
I'll push it.
And also, we, again, the board wants to extend a very Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. See you guys.
Be back, we'll be back on, uh, twenty-seventh, and, uh, you really want, uh, uh, uh. And, uh, we want to extend our condolences to our recording secretary over here and, uh, Miss, uh, Michelle Brown on the death of her father. That was on Tuesday night. And, um, you know, condolences go out to the family. Anything else? Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, Shane.